Thank you so much for joining us this evening as we celebrate really a milestone in our district. We have had meetings in this location a couple of years ago and we said that we wanted to make sure that AISD was leading the way, not trying to catch up, but leading the way, being an example for others. That we're a big district and we have the right community, we have the right students, the right mix of teachers and staff and support, and we should be upfront. So today is a culmination of some of that vision. We're not completely done, but this is one of those big milestones that really begins to transform our community into the reality we want it to be. And so it's my great honor to be part of the district, to be serving as superintendent during this time, and to welcome you to help us officially, because we've been announcing this as you have been, you know, aware of that since the summer, but to officially honor our school board for being the Board of the Year for Texas. Let's give them a round of applause. And I'll tell you that you know, you know, a lot of the work that they do because many of you are involved in our schools and with us, and you know the work that they do. But the things that you may not know are the number of hours that this board spends working, researching, preparing, analyzing, contemplating the direction of this district, assisting. We have a communication in this, with this board that's really second to none. Because they each take their responsibility, not only very seriously, but it's something that they see as a purpose, to serve our students. And about a couple of years ago, we said the same thing when we started our strategic plan and things like that. Our number one objective is to serve our students and serve them exceptionally well. This board demonstrates that over and over again. And it's not easy serving on the school board. I can tell you because I see from different perspectives, the work that they go through, the feedback that they get, positive and negative, from our constituents. But I'll tell you that their laser focus on making sure that every student in Arlington ISD has access to an exceptional education. And they are relentless about that focus. And I'll tell you as a superintendent, that's the, that's the team you want. Relentless on the focus of making sure our students have the best opportunities in the entire state. And so the board has gone through many different things, including budgets and things like that, but they always come back to our students. And just a quick, quick story, because this is my section and I'll take a little bit of time. You know, when we interviewed for the Board of the Year, because they were nominated and then they were finalists, and I won't say which other districts we beat out because there's about 1,200 of them. But, but we went into the interview because that's part of the process. And they don't want to hear, believe it or not, they don't want to hear from the superintendent. Okay, so I had 30 seconds to just say, here's the AISD board basically, and that was it. And then they took over when they had questions and answers from the committee. And the number one thing they were looking for, as later we learned, is, is the relationship and the focus, is it real? Is it transforming a district and does it translate into student success? And without a doubt, that's what they saw in that brief amount of time, that our connection, their connection in particular as a team, is seamless, focused in the right direction, and real. And when you have a team that works together and leaves all the egos aside for the betterment of students, you have a formula for success. And so we collectively and all our students are very fortunate to have individuals that are dedicated to that focus. And so once again, I welcome you to our reception for the Board of the Year for Texas. Thank you.
We're here to celebrate tonight and it's a great honor and pleasure for me to represent the city council. And I'm going to expand just a little bit on what the superintendent talked about, kind of the bigger picture and how we see it at City Hall. The difference these folks are making in the lives of kids is important, but it's making our city great. It's making our city become a place folks want to move to, want to be a part of. The things that we've got going on in the city have been made so much stronger and better because of the work of these folks. I was talking to Aaron just a few minutes ago and I was a little disappointed. This wasn't going to be a roast because I've known some of these folks for a long time. In fact, Aaron and I both started to work in Arlington at the Arlington Cancer Center together about 20 years ago. His wife worked for me at the time. Bowie and I served, or was in leadership Arlington together many years ago. And I look across this board and they're more than just the board to me, they're my friends. And I care about them, I care about what they do and I'm proud of them. I appreciate what you guys do and the earnestness by which you do it. It's just an honor for us to live in a city that has a school district, is committed, a board that has been so successful. Certain, our congratulations to you, well deserved. I'm not sure what the competition was exactly, but nevertheless, I'm sure that it was formidable, right, it was a very formidable competition. But on behalf of the mayor and the city council, I congratulate you. Thank you for what you've done, it means more than you know. And for those of us who have the pleasure of serving this community as well, what we're doing together is making a difference in the lives of our kids, our families, and this community. For that, I'm proud to live in Arlington too. Thank you.
You know, public trust in government is a rarity. Without trust, there is no relationship. Without trust, there is no collaboration. And without trust, certainly there will be no teamwork. Without trust, a vision is nothing but an illusion. And without trust, success is totally farfetched. I have had the honor of working with the Arlington Board of Trustees for the past four or five years. And they have shown me, they have demonstrated to me how to restore that trust. They casted a vision that embraces everyone. They put together a plan that is inclusive of everybody. And they embrace all ideas, all skin colors, all visions into an authentic team of people and move toward with a purpose to achieve a vision that isn't about them, that isn't about any one of us individually, but it is completely and authentically about the future of our community. And that is why they are great. They are great isn't because they are pursuing that greatness for themselves. They are great because they have given their time, their energy, everything they got for the betterment of our community for others, other than themselves. And I think I can learn from that, and I think any one of us can learn of that. And as a Tarrant County Commissioner representing Southeast Tarrant County, I can tell you tonight that I'm very proud of them. But more importantly, I want to thank you for making us proud and for making us believe once again in all community and in our government. Congratulations.
We couldn't provide all of those opportunities that Dr. Cavazos talked about without our partners in higher education. So now I'd like to introduce TCC Southeast President, Dr. Bill Coppola.
First, I just want to say that I really feel blessed to work in a community where education is the first priority. And with the partnership of Arlington Independent School District, University of Texas at Arlington, and Tarrant County College, Southeast Campus, my campus, I'm very proud of, we are the envy of the state. And when I say that, I hear it on my level, not also. When I travel the state and see my counterparts, they know what's going on in Arlington and they want to know how that partnership works. I have the good fortune of interacting with the board, it seems like almost on a daily basis, we run into each other. I don't think I ever got to know a board on a first-name basis before I got to know my own board here. And like our board at TCC, they are friendly, cordial, visionary, and most of all, passionate. Everyone is always impressed with the amounts of positive energy that Dr. Cavazos has. But truly, that energy comes from a very energized board. When I first met, I first got here, I gotta tell one story, I always have to tell a story. When I first got here, four, I'm starting my fourth year at Southeast Campus. I'm very proud and very excited to be here. When I first got here, I got on my calendar within the first two months, two board members from Arlington Independent School District were coming to see you. And I didn't even get to meet my own board yet. And I thought that they were coming to tell me what it's like in Arlington. You know, this is our town and they're coming here. And Jamie and John came to visit me, I've been both sides, I'm going back and forth, came to visit me and we sat down and I was very nervous in the meeting. And what they wanted to talk about is, we need help. How can you help us as a partner with the community that we have here and bring the education level of our students up? We didn't talk about how can we open the doors to college, we didn't talk about dual credit, we talked about first-generation high school students, the true students that really, how can we help? And at that time, I left that meeting, we talked about an hour and a half, knowing that I made the right decision to come to Tarrant County College and work here. It's wonderful to have a board that truly wants to make a change and is sincerely concerned about the concerns of the entire community. Ended a cycle of poverty by providing quality, accessible education and facilities for the 65,000 students, it's their number one priority. You're going to hear that theme over and over tonight. Nelson Mandela said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." And of course, the best move they made was hiring Dr. Cavazos, who's become a very good friend of mine. I learned early on, as many people told me, you cannot say no to Marcelo. When Marcelo comes to you with an idea and he says, "Bill, what about do-" and he always has his hand up, "What about doing this?" And I say, "No, we can't do that." And then that six-year-old comes out at him, "Why? Why?" And every time I say, "But why not? Why not?" And all I know is I leave his office, "Go and determine I'm not going to do this" with a plan and I say, "What did I just agree to?" And then there's a follow-up from one of the staff that says, "I understand you agreed to this." But it's always been, and I say, "Yeah, but then we have to make it work." One of the best examples of that is our partnership for the early college high school. I am so proud of the early college high school on our campus and having Ben and his staff and his 120 students there. Everybody should go see that facility. This was really a truly, an embarking endeavor that has been done nowhere else in the country. And we went full steam ahead with it. I had to present this to the board, AISD board, on one of the board nights, just like Dr. Cavazos came to my board. And I had, this was my third early college high school, and I warned Dr. Cavazos, "You gotta be really careful because everyone that I've opened, there's been a split board. There's been a three, four board. And if that board changes and you have to renew your early college high school every year, your early, it could go away." So I went up and gave my presentation and everybody's looking at me and at the end, it was silence, nobody said anything. And then Peter, sitting in the middle, puts up his hands and says, "This is a no-brainer." And it ended up being 100% unanimous vote, one of the first ones that we ever had, and it was exciting. So, this is not just a board of elected officials, but each and every one of them is a true leader that focuses on the students, not their own personal agendas. And best of all, this is also a board that not only gets along well, but they really seem to have a lot of fun. We're not just, you are not just the best board in Texas, but you really are the hardest-working board in the United States. So on be, on behalf of Chancellor Hadley and all the employees of Tarrant County College, I truly want to thank you very much and I'm very proud that I'm a partner with you all. Thank you.
We are currently working with UT Arlington to develop a STEM Academy. And here representing UT Arlington is the College of Science Assistant Dean, Dr. Ashley Purgisant.
Thank you so much for having me here. Excuse me, it really is an honor. And I have to say, our president, President Vistav Skarvahari, really wanted to be here this evening and I apologize that he couldn't be, so you have to put up with me. But I wanted to start by saying, if you take a look at this program, a member of the school board is only speaking in the closing. And I think that that really speaks to the spirit of your service and the fact that you're actually ended up making this evening about the community by having stakeholders in the community, including one of your own students, come and talk tonight. So I think that that's really a good representation. For those of you that don't know, UT Arlington is very fortunate to enjoy a really, really rich partnership with this fabulous school district. And we owe that to the leadership of the school board and to Dr. Cavazos. Your students of AISD, a lot of them, countless numbers of them, end up at UT Arlington and that is a huge blessing for us. We only want to continue to do our best to make pathways for students into higher education smoother. And we have to also thank people like Dr. Coppola and all of Tarrant County College for also partnering with us on that. And the vision of this school board to help break those barriers down and ensure that all students have an opportunity to move into higher ed is setting an example for the rest of the state and as you said, even the country. And so I am going to take a second to highlight a couple of programs, not because I want to plug what UT Arlington is doing, but to share with you the innovative mindset that the leadership of this school district has had. And so one of those programs is bound for success where we've, they've actually allowed us to put our academic advisors on the campuses of Arlington School Districts so that students can get that fast fulfillment and pick out those classes early and learn about majors and what career options are available. And that only increases not only their access to higher ed, but their opportunities to graduate sooner and be successful and things of that nature. And Leslie mentioned the STEM Academy. I have to tell you that it is the Arlington School District faculty and teachers that championed that STEM Academy. And UT Arlington was just glad to welcome that opportunity and help enrich it. But this school board, I have to tell you, I served on the UT System Board of Regents for a brief stint. And I had to go to your school board one evening to present, you know, UT Arlington's support of this STEM Academy. And they did everything that a great board should do. They asked myself and the teachers of this school district very tough but fair questions to make sure that we were giving the students what they deserved. But beyond that, once they felt comfortable, it was clear that they were enthusiastic to support what the teachers wanted to get done. And you can't ask for a better leadership system than that. You know, ensuring that people are doing what they need to get done, but supporting them to have their ideas come to fruition. So I thank you very much for helping that partnership really take off. And I also wanted to say that higher education, those of us in higher education often like to think that we are the thought leaders. But one of the most important initiatives that's going to help our future pipeline of students in this country is early childhood learning. And school districts like AISD, you're the thought leaders on that. People like you are the ones that are leading the way for universities to learn how that affects our students coming in and how we can help. So I also want to thank you for doing that and supporting those initiatives. We still have a lot of good work to be done and those of us at UT Arlington are really passionate about innovation and thinking about new ways to provide programming to students in our K-12 partners, especially with Arlington Independent School District because we share this community together. And we only want our interaction with you to continue to grow and flourish. And I'm very proud to say that publicly. So thank you for being forward-thinking, unafraid of tackling challenges and willing to have tough conversations and work through difficult logistics to make our partnership stronger and improve the lives of your student, your own students, which in turn improves the lives of our students. People will say that the future of education will belong to those who care the most or those who change the fastest with the times. But the truth is that the future of education belongs to everybody. Everyone needs and deserves an education to advance their own life. And this board is bold and you're now a model for others to follow. So thank you so much for all that you do for UT Arlington, for your own students, and for our community. Thank you.
As you can see from our speakers so far this evening, community engagement is essential here in the Arlington ISD. And to speak from our business community, we have Arlington Chamber of Commerce President and CEO, Mr. Westery.
Andy used a great word, "trust." I was told long ago that your trust relationships meant everything. And so Andy, I've got one more word, "inclusive." Because if there's one other word that describes this board, it's "inclusive." They're inclusive of every child, they're inclusive of every teacher, every administrator, every organization in the community. When they built their strategic plan, they reached out not just internally, but externally. And Marcelo hit it spot-on when he said, "In this room, hundreds of people helped shape what became this district's strategic plan." And that was critical because we all have a lot at stake in this board and their leadership. Because all of our future mayors and city council members and county commissioners, superintendents and teachers and engineers, all kinds of folks are sitting in the classrooms in Arlington ISD today. And how we shape their thoughts and their minds will have a lot to do with the success of this community. Because if you follow the track, many of those students go, "Where, Bill? TCC." Many of them go to UTA. And then we hope many of them will stay here and continue to make Arlington a home. And that's critical because this is, if nothing else, an inclusive group. Now, why did I say we haven't been apart very long? Not only is this school board committed, they just came back from our annual Arlington-Dawston delegation. Most of the board and Marcelo were there with us for three days, as was Bill and Andy Nguyen and the mayor and many of the city council members and our workforce board and a lot of others. Because we went as a community. And that's another hallmark of the Arlington Independent School District. They didn't go alone, they didn't set meetings apart from the community. When we met with the head of the Texas Workforce Commission, the Texas Education Agency, and the Higher Ed Coordinating Board, we were all there as a team. Now, they did ask more questions of the educators than Andy and I, but we were still all there as a team. And so if it does take a village to raise a child, it takes a school board that understands that to make it successful. Takes a school board that reaches out in an inclusive manner and truly engages in ways that build trust, the kinds of relationships that nurture and grow the future leaders of this community. I feel privileged to be a part of it, I'm pleased we're a part of the team, and I'm pleased I can call every one of you a friend and a partner. Congratulations on a job exceedingly well-done to serve the students. We all serve at Arlington ISD, thank you.
The Student Leadership Advisory Board represents all six traditional high schools. We have the junior class presidents from all six schools and then a senior who was on the board the year before serves as president. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Mr. Hector Gomez. He's a senior from Arlington High School and is president of the Student Leadership Advisory Board.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome tonight and thank you for taking time to come here. I want to introduce all of us in case you didn't hear it at the front. This is Jay Schmidt, he's the junior class president at Martin High School. Grace Sprinkle, the junior class president at Arlington High School. Melody Ethly, the junior class president at Ziegian High School. Grace Kennermer, the junior class president at Lamar. And Brittany Horn, the class president at Sam Houston. My name is Hector Gomez and I'm the senior at Arlington High School. Vivian Nguyen wasn't able to make it, but she's the junior class president at Bowie High School as well. As president of SLAB, this is my second year being able to work with the Board of Trustees. It is a tremendous opportunity and honor and an honor to present my school and provide feedback directly to the administration and to the board. On behalf of the Student Leadership Advisory Board, I want to thank AISD and the Board of Trustees for having the vision to establish our group and congratulate you on being named the 2014 Outstanding School Board of Texas. Thank you for all you do.
Okay, I mentioned some very talented students from Morton earlier and you're about to see their work. Every January, the State of Texas celebrates School Board Recognition Month to celebrate the hard work and dedication to the children of this district. It has become a tradition for the Communications Department to work with the Visual Arts Department and to select a school to bring to life a theme that reflects the district's appreciation for your service. This year's theme is "A Work of Heart." I would like to introduce Morton Elementary Art Teacher, Ms. Batisha Williams. Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams' students worked very hard to create wonderful works of art representing this year's theme.
To the outstanding members of the school board and Dr. Cavazos, I am honored for our school to be chosen to show appreciation for what you do for Arlington ISD. I am the proud art teacher at Morton Elementary and I'm a product of AISD. I have never wanted to work in any other district. The quality education that I received here is what inspired me to become a teacher myself. Near and dear to my heart are my students, AISD, and my passion for teaching. We show gratitude tonight for what you have done to make the arts a priority in this district. I have watched all of you attend numerous art exhibits, questioning and complimenting the students and making them feel like the true artists that they are. The upcoming addition of the dual-language fine arts academies to our district shows your commitment to the arts for our students' future. Thank you for recognizing the developmental benefits of art. The students of Morton Elementary have worked tirelessly preparing for you works from their heart. I am proud to present the beautiful work from some of the best and brightest talent Morton has to offer. Up first, Jason Lopez. Jason is a third grader who loves making art. Jason says, "I like how we take an idea and turn it into a masterpiece." Jason would like to be a dentist or soccer player when he grows up. Up next, we have Aneah Salazar. Aneah... Aneah is a fourth grader who wants to be an art teacher when she grows up. What she likes best about school is the hard-working teachers that help her to learn. Karen Ocampo. Karen is also a fourth grader who would like to become a doctor and an artist when she grows up. She says she wants to help people and draw the good things that she does. Jocelyn Gonzalez. Jocelyn wants to be an artist when she grows up because art is her favorite subject. She is also in fourth grade and she loves to be creative. Her favorite thing about art class is getting the chance to use her imagination. Our next student, Nagad Mohammed couldn't, I'm sorry, our next student, Marybel Roman, could not be here tonight, but her homeroom teacher, Diana McDuffie, is standing in her place. Marybel told me that she didn't know that she was talented until her artwork was showcased in an exhibit here earlier this year. She loves that when making art, there are no mistakes. If you mess up, you have to figure out a way to fix it. Nagad Mohammed is not here, but her homeroom teacher, Tracy Smith, is standing in for her. Nagad says that what she loves best about school are her great teachers. She says they work hard to teach us what we need for our future. Juliana Rodriguez. Juliana Rodriguez. Juliana created a wonderful self-portrait. She is a very active student on our campus. She wrote us a quote. Her quote is, "Art gives me a chance to express myself and let go of the past." Art gives me... Art makes me feel like I'm tearing down the walls of my dreams to make way for reality. And we have Angel Lopez. Angel is a sixth grader, and he is an excellent student. And he's also the big brother of Jason Lopez over here on the other end. He just wanted to say to the board, "Thank you for what you do." He is very proud to be chosen to represent his school, Morton Elementary. On behalf of Morton Elementary, we hope that you truly enjoy these works of heart. May they brighten up the walls of your workspaces and liven up any day that you may feel the need for encouragement.
The Outstanding School Board of Texas is an award presented every year by the Texas Association of School Administrators. Here to present the award is the TASA Executive Director, Mr. Johnny Vassaka.
Thank you very much, and good evening to all of you. What an honor to be here in your community this evening to join with the community leaders, with school leaders, with members of this community to recognize the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees. Each year, our association, the Texas Association of School Administrators, recognizes the exemplary service of local Boards of Trustees across the state. Service to communities, service to children through our program. And this program was established in 1971. And ever since that date, we have been recognizing outstanding boards across the state of Texas. This prestigious award highlights the work of school boards that demonstrate dedication to their mission, a commitment to quality programs that enhance learning opportunities for all students. On September 27th, during the annual TASA-TASP Joint Annual Convention, we recognized five school boards as Texas Honor Boards. Following a review of applications and nominations from across the state, our committee had selected five Honor Boards to include Arlington, Clear Creek, Plano, Waco Midway, and Culberson County in West Texas. Following extensive interviews with each of these boards and their superintendent, as Dr. Cavassos mentioned earlier, the selection committee chose this board as the Outstanding School Board in the state of Texas for 2014. The selection criteria include a review of the board's policymaking function, its support for programs that serve the educational needs of all students, financial support, community involvement, and their own development as board members working together for the benefit of the community. Arlington ISD Board members demonstrated unity by working together to develop the "achieve today, excel tomorrow" strategic plan, a clear vision that has carried across every area of the district. The board made a unanimous decision to call for the largest bond election in Tarrant County. As a team, board members visited campuses, community meetings, and citizens' homes to share information about the bond package, which was ultimately successful with a 70% voter approval. The resulting improvements to facilities, the fine arts program, the district's safety and security and technology will benefit students for years to come. In his nomination letter, Superintendent Marcelo Cavassos stated that this board is "a dedicated and highly effective group of individuals who truly care about their role in school governance and work daily to help the Arlington ISD achieve our mission to empower and engage all students, to be contributing responsible citizens, reaching their maximum potential through relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences." They are passionate about ensuring that the Arlington ISD is globally acknowledged as the premier school district. The chair of our selection committee stated that the Arlington Board, the staff exhibits a unity among the trustees and the superintendent truly exemplifying a team of eight. The board has faced tremendous challenges and has had to make some bold decisions, but has clearly transformed its governance and restored public trust, making Arlington a model for all other boards across the state. We know that the success of public education depends on the willingness of school boards to serve their constituents well, but also to act as community leaders and community builders. It is important for the board and the superintendent to set the direction for the district to be responsive to the community and to build capacity across the district to create engaging work for students. We believe that the Arlington Board exceeds these standards and is extremely deserving of this award. You should be proud of their leadership, as this board sets the example for school boards all over the state of Texas. This board, without question, also embraces our own mission and our own vision within our association to create and sustain student-centered schools and develop future-ready students. I want to recognize the individual board members and offer our utmost congratulations to this entire board on being named Texas 2014 Outstanding School Board. And you know them well, Bowie Hogg, president, Jamie Solins, Dr. Aaron Reich, Gloria Peña, Peter Barron, John Hibbs, Tony Pompa, and your newest board member, Keisha Mays. Bowie, if you'd come forward, please. We have a plaque to present to the board that includes their photograph and the names of all of the board members and recognizes the board as the Outstanding School Board in Texas. Congratulations. We will also present, not at this time, but we have an individual plaque for each board member that will be shared with them individually, also for them to take back to their homes or their offices, recognizing their accomplishment and their commitment to this district. So, again, it's an honor for me to be here this evening, to join with all of you and expressing appreciation and thanks to this outstanding school board. Thank you very much.
People ask us many times, "Why do you run for the school board?" Why would you put yourself through that? Why would you go through the things you have to deal with? Why would you take those phone calls late at night, miss dinners with your family? It's the room that's sitting in here is why we're doing this. It's the impact we have. So I must take this and take a few minutes on behalf of the board and the entire ISD to say thank you. Thank you for being here to recognize us. As a board, we don't recognize ourselves much, but boy, we threw that out the window tonight. When a board member steps off the board, that's usually the only time we're really recognizing all the contribution that board members make. When one of our members finally retires from the board, we spend that time, and that's usually the only time. But tonight, it's a special recognition. Tonight's a very positive recognition. And there's two level of recognitions, and there's a good one and a negative one. I'm glad we have the really good one going tonight on this recognition. But first, let me thank, I think we all stand up here and thank our God for putting us in this position and in giving us the trust to be elected to represent 65,000 students, over 170,000 voters, 350,000 residents in Arlington. It truly is, and all my colleagues will agree, it's a serving that we all have, and we're all proud to do it, and we must thank our Lord first. This award is not just about the board, though. You hear us say it's the Outstanding School Board. We all started talking during discussion. This is not about us winning an award. This is about all the levels winning this award. The first person who has the most recognition for us winning this award is our superintendent, Dr. Marcelo Cavassos. The most critical job a board does is you determine who's your superintendent of schools. And let me tell you, this board took it very serious about who was going to be our superintendent of schools. We went through, and I'll tell you, on behalf of the board, we not only have the best superintendent in the state of Texas, we have the best superintendent in the entire country, and we're very lucky to serve with Dr. Cavassos. But Dr. Cavassos can't do it all on his own. He's got his senior staff that's driving, who helps push all these initiatives there. At this time, would all of our senior staff that's in the room, from Dr. Cavassos' leadership cabinet, please stand? The countless hours these individuals spend at our late-night board meetings, when we have questions of how we're doing this, and sometimes just basic explanations to get us through this, we can't thank you enough, because all the ideas that want to be in place can't go into fact without you helping. Then we come down, and we have senior staff that do a good job. But we can have any idea we want, we can put any policy in place. But nothing matters, and nothing happens in this district without the most critical people of this district. And that is all of our staff, our teachers, our maintenance workers, our custodians, our cafeteria workers, every single person in this district. If you work for this district, would you please stand to be recognized? Because this is what this award's about tonight. These are the folks that make it happen, that put in the day-to-day work, that constantly see and help strive of what we're doing. But the reason we're all here, the reason every single person in this room stand, the reason every single one of us ran for this office, the reason Dr. Cavassos committed his life to education, nothing matters, except what some of these speakers before me, so I'll look who he said. We're all here for the most important people in the community. It's not an elected official, it's not the parent. The most important people in this community are our students. If there's any students, and I see a couple, if there's any students that are still left in the room, would our students please stand? They're the reason we're here, they're the reason we put in work. Our SLAB board has been amazing to work with. It's one of the ideas, and we started working with them to really get the student input. And last, the reason we did it all, you heard us talk about them, you saw the way this agenda even rolls. It's about the entire community. This award is not just for the AISD Board of Trustees or for the Arlington Independent School District. This award is about the entire Arlington community, because you can't do it on your own. From our partners who are helping with after-school care, from our preschool community that's helping educate students, to our social service workers who are helping with all the parents, all the participants that are happening on this, all the parents that are helping educate the children outside of school time and driving the right initiatives, all those pieces come together. So at this time, would the entire room please stand, and we thank you as the entire community. Thank you. And I must thank, on behalf of the board, the hours are worth it. I don't think you'll hear any board member say, "The hours aren't worth it." We know we're making impacts. But we must take a special minute to thank our families. We spend many hours away from our families, many late nights, dragging children to events, watching my six-month-old not cry, luckily. Good job, good job. I heard a baby crying, I wasn't sure if it was ours or not, so... But to all of our family members that put up and allow us to serve our community, we see the impact, and hopefully you see it, and I think it's made us all better humans and individuals. So I must take a second to say thank you to all of our family for allowing us to serve our community in this portal. Thank you. And then I have to recognize a couple of individuals who helped pave the road before most of us became board members. I see most of them, I want to make sure I have them all. Would all former school board members that have served in the Arlington Independent School District please stand? Ms. Patrick, Ms. Morris, Mr. Ash. I know Ms. Wade was supposed to be here. There we go. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see Ben back there. Ben Rhodes, Ms. Sherry Wade, Ms. Diane Patrick, Ms. Anne Morris, and Mr. Jim Ash. Thank you so much for all the work you put in to the schools before to get us on the right path, and thank you for paving the road. We must also take a special recognition. You hear us talk about a team of eight. Well, we have a team of eight. It's kind of nine right now. As we had a colleague who is a true servant at heart, and as he ran for the state senate, he was required to not run for the school board. And so we do have our current board that went through the interview and did this process, but we must take a second to have special recognition for our board member who just stepped off this last May, Mr. Tony Pompa. This board's focused, Dr. Cavassos talked about it, a laser focus. We're focused on student achievement. I was talking to some individuals before this meeting, and I said, "You look at our board, and we spend about 70 to 80% of our time talking about students." Because a lot of boards around the state don't get focused on students. They get caught up in all the other issues that come with being on a school board. And we're laser-focused on students. How do we have these students? How do we have achievement? So we won this award because we are focused on students. We're focused on the student achievement. We're focused on the partnerships. How do our partnerships enhance our students in the ASD? And you can see from our community partners in here, we value everything you bring to us. Bill, we're glad you don't know how to say no. We drive Dr. Cavassos to tell him not to say no. Don't let Bill Coppola say no. Dr. Cavassos, get as much as you can out of West jury from the chamber. Get that city council to vote for what we need on land. Get that county commissioner to start using those county dollars to bring those things together. Find the programs at UTA where we can offer the very first STEM academy, where it's very hard to get science and engineering to say, "Yeah, we'll allow high school kids to get credit." It's about those community partnerships. It's about the focus, the bond. It's a great story, but it's about how does it enhance all the programs we're doing, and how does it enhance the programs for our students? That's what it's about. We've taken a lot of focus. It's taken a lot of work, and I have to thank my colleagues. A special moment to thank our colleagues. This is a board, and I have the honor to speak on behalf of the entire board. This is a team we always wanted to work on. Mr. John Hibbs, Mr. Peter Barron, Dr. Cavassos, Keisha Mays, Jamie Solins, Aaron Reich, Gloria Peña, and Tony Pompa. People ask me, "How do you describe your board?" And I started thinking about, what are the key words to describe our board? For one, we're strategic. We're very strategic. We're going to let you know where we're going. We're going to come up with a strategy, and we're going to stick to a strategy and a plan with an outcome in mind of what we're going to do. We're very bold. We're a very bold board. We are encouraging to try new things. We want Dr. Cavassos and our staff to try new initiatives. They're not all going to work. Some of the ideas are great, some of them need a little more work. Some of them, we're not going to talk about anymore and move on to the next idea. But it's creating that type of culture which makes the focus. How do we create a leadership team that embraces that, where every level, we understand that? So our teachers understand, this is what we want. This is how we focus. And then our students understand, we like new ideas and initiatives that students come up with. How do we bring those together? Our board's also very mindful. We understand what a major duty we have, what a major commitment we have to the community. You can ask realtors, and about 35% of property values based on your public schools. Your public schools determine how a community grows. I love our city council, I love our county, I love our Tarrant County College, I love our business community, but nothing's a bigger driving factor than how our public schools... our business community, but nothing's a bigger driving factor than how our public schools work. It's a great, great, great driver and we are on the right track with huge, huge success. The last thing that describes our board and describes our entire district is we're together. We're a team. We're focused on initiative together. We all have different ideas, we all have different ways, but we all know what we want the outcome to be. We want it from our partners, we want it from our community, we want it from our teachers, we want it from the parents, we want it from the students, we want it from our families. We're a team together. And so on behalf of this team and the entire community that involves everyone in that public education, we humbly accept this award and thank you for all the work you have so that we can recognize Arlington Independent School District. Thank you so much.